Call to order, I call the May 9, 2023 budget hearing to order. Trustee Brother, will you please do this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clarkson, will you please do the roll call?
Trustee Dobrath?
Present.
Trustee Kirby?
Here.
Trustee LaFrida?
Present.
Trustee Rappa?
Present.
Supervisor Bowman?
Here.
We have a forum, also present Clerk Larson and Highway Supervisor Kula and Attorney Nigma.
Do we have any public comments tonight?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Side Campus. Uh, well, got some things down in my mind, thoughts in order, alright. First off, thank you for letting me speak and talking to you guys. Uh, I want to introduce myself to those who don't know, my name is Side Campus, I sit on the Lake County Board, and I represent District 16, there's Round Lake, Round Lake Park, Round Lake Heights, and uh, parts of the Villa, and it's a big area, so if you appreciate, uh, part of my outreach is to reach out to all the townships, all the trustees and municipalities, and get a bird's eye view of what's going on within the district. Uh, one of the big things I ran on was being available and being a phone call away. And that is my offer to all of you here today, getting my phone number out to uh, these two individuals. Uh, I know, uh, Crystal, Michelle, Michael, obviously, uh, Ms. Kirby, so, I'm a phone call away, uh, what I would like to do is figure out what we can do for Abound Township, um, what you can ask of me, um, and I will try and deliver it for you on the county board. Um, if there's a wish list, if there's uh, wants, if there's any concerns you have, I get them a phone call away. Thank you for the tour that you gave me when it was raining and freezing, so I appreciate that. Um, uh, she met me at the late at night and we walked the, walked the Abound Township's uh, building, and also showed me outside, so I really appreciate that, and it's a testament to how dedicated you are as well, so.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Side Campus, and uh, hope to hear from you guys as well, absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight? New business, number one, for 2023, 2024 town budget appropriation ordinance. Is there a motion to approve?
Um, this is the hearing, so this is available for discussion now on anybody who has business related to this particular item, because it's a public hearing.
Okay.
So if the public has any comments specific to the budget, now would be the time to present that.
Nope? Travis?
Yes, Travis Haley, now in Round Lake Beach. Yes, I just want to met this board for working together, work together on making this a balanced budget. I very much appreciate you guys' work on this, and I'm very much looking forward for this to pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion to adjourn our budget hearing meeting?
I'll second, or are you seeking a motion?
Seeking a motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Verge on.
Verge on at 7:03 PM.
I call to order the regular May 9, 2023, regular board meeting. Trustee Rappa, will you please do the flag again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Formerly patriotic, it's on the. Whoa. Clerk Larson.
Trustee Dobrath?
Present.
Kirby? LaFrida?
Present.
Rappa?
Here.
Supervisor Bowman?
Here.
We have a forum, still present Clerk Larson, Highway Supervisor Kula, and Attorney Nigma.
Do we have any public comments? Nope. Okay, officials' report, anybody have an official report you want to give?
Should have all received a copy of the Sessor Rust's report, the email. And along with the board meeting, just a note to, uh, my thanks to Isaac for helping me through the budget ordinance for tonight, to make sure that all the dates and numbers were accurate.
Thank you.
I, I have a question about it, no, it's not really about the report, but I have a question of, um, I noticed when I was reviewing the bills for the Highway Department, uh, an Amazon governmental account, is that, um, and I didn't, I didn't recognize that it was, it's, is it different than a regular Amazon account? Okay, would you just explain?
The main difference that appeals is the price.
That's what I'm saying.
If you look up, if you look up a price under the government, if I look up a price, uh, government account, and I look it up, personal account, there's not even a difference.
Alright, terrific, I knew that we had those relationships and we got special prices, but I wasn't, when I saw Amazon, it raised your outline for me, I appreciate that, I appreciate the clarification.
I just want to make one quick little statement, so this weekend, uh, the greatest lake in the Round Lake, postal letterman carriers will be doing their big food drive this weekend for, for Abound Township. Last, it'll be one year this week, is the first time that we had enough food to open up a food pantry. So this is a big deal for me, even though it took us about two months to actually get the food pantry, um, going. This is the one year that we've been able to maintain a food pantry, a hundred percent reliant on the community, and that's something that we should celebrate, because there's very few food pantries that are able to maintain, based only on community support, so thank you for everybody that has been supporting the food pantry, and to let people know about this weekend, on Saturday, Letterman Carriers will be picking up food that's left on, or by the mailbox, and will be delivered back to the postal service, and then on Monday, Bob Kula will be picking it up with the rest of his members from the Highway Department and bringing it to the township. That is a huge overhaul that his office is taking on, and so thank you, Bob, for, you know, doing this again this year. It's, it's, you know, it's a whole, not a whole day, but it's a good chunk of time that you're taking, what?
Happy to do it.
So thank you, I just wanted to make sure that you're.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that is it, and I have a motion to approve official reports as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number one, under new business, approval of meeting minutes as presented. I have a motion to approve the April 1st, April 11th, 2023, regular board meeting.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Name.
I have a little question on the meeting for 11th, um, minutes, I was absent for that meeting. For our ticket, it says that I am staying for the approval of the minutes, I think you meant to say I'm.
I think they meant to say I'm staying as well.
I would abstain, so we just need to correct, because I didn't abstain, I was absent.
I'm going to correct that right there, good catch, thank you.
You were there.
Yep.
So do we have a motion going?
Motion.
Oh, you know, I'm looking at this one. You were not at the March 14th meeting?
Missed two meetings of the bill.
I missed two meetings.
Back to back.
I'm just making a note of.
Double check, double check.
I'll double check, because I think you abstained on the vote on those minutes, because you weren't present.
Because I wasn't present tonight, but I thought I wasn't at the people meeting either, so just double check and make sure, just let me know.
Oh, I see where the issue is, got it, it's because the next two motions were about, um, the bills, I mean, we're here and voted yes and there, but it said abstain. We'll correct them appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Any other corrections? Okay, motion to approve, we have a.
As corrected?
Yeah. Yeah, motion to approve as corrected.
So.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Trustee LaFrida?
Aye.
Dobrath?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Rappa?
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number two, approval of monthly bills as presented, A, prepaid bills, and B, outstanding bills, can I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve prepaid and outstanding.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
The trustees, Kirby?
Yes.
Rappa?
Aye.
LaFrida?
Aye.
Dobrath?
Yep.
Supervisor Bowman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number three, fiscal year 2023, 2024 township budget, can I have a motion to approve the budget?
I'll motion to approve the 23, 24 budget.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee LaFrida?
Aye.
Trustee Kirby?
Yes.
Trustee Dobrath?
Yep.
Trustee Rappa?
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number four, proposal for consulting services, year 20MS4 compliance, that would be Bob?
Yeah, I didn't really pass the budget for that, but this was just a, uh, this is just an update on the new permit.
So is there an update?
Yeah, we could have. Yeah, let me pull that up in a minute, we're really slow for me, how long is this?
Is there a difference?
Yeah, I've, I've repeated some of the, the things that we had last year, this year's presentation is just a few pages, there's just some updates, because there's a new, there's going to be a new permit issued for MS4s. So again, I just put this in for everybody's reminder of what we're looking for, for illicit discharge detection. These are things that we look for, and we find a lot, is the erosion, uh, you know, the stuff of the grate. Uh, what we're really looking for is the oil sheen, which we have found on a couple occasions, that gets reported to stormwater management and IAPA. Why is it necessary, I think everybody knows that, uh, environment, tracking stormwater maintenance, uh, and PDES, that we, we're required to have, to permit, uh, with, with, uh, to discharge our storm water into a, we're an MS4, so, uh, we're required to have a permit to discharge our water into, uh, our storm water into a body of water. So this is part of what we do, and what Gualta does, part of their fee, uh, they do, um, they do our fall inspections as, as we do as well. Go ahead. Uh, this is, this is a new inspection form that's coming out, it gets filled out, usually that gets filled out by, I think County does some of the inspection, and they help us out with that, and then, um, Gualta's part of that, and we do it as well. So, okay, between the three, between the three government bodies, everything on our end gets checked. So these are just a, a map of our basins and stream banks. It's hard, I'm sorry, you guys, it's hard to see, but go ahead. So here's the six minimum control measures that we have to do every, you know, that we're, we do every year, the public involvement, participation, public outreach, construction site, uh, stormwater runoff control, I, I do that, um, I, I do have the license to do that, so if we, on our project, I should say, so if we have a project that affects over a half acre, uh, we have to do inspections weekly, or after a rain event or snow, and then our pollution prevention, good housekeeping, and that's, that's our, you know, our, uh, shop, a big part of our shop, how we store our salt, avoid, uh, stop runoff from the salt, and so all of our salt is under, under roof, so we don't have that issue. And how we handle, how we treat chemicals, uh, I mean, how we treat and store them, I should say. Go ahead. So there is going to be a new permit issued, but they just haven't done it yet, so there's going to be, we're looking for some new guidelines that we're going to have to abide by, and we just, we're still waiting for that, and so we just have, so we're just working under the same NOI right now, uh, so go ahead. So we have, you know, I think most of you know, we're, we're under the Fox, Fox River watershed and the Spleens River, so, uh, what's going to happen, go ahead to the next one. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it? There's, so they're, they're thinking that we're going to have to join these study groups for these Fox and, and, uh, Spleens, but we're waiting to see, that letter is right there. So we're waiting to see what our requirements are going to be, so we just don't know yet, when I know that, I'll get back to you guys on that. That's all, that's all the differences we have, we have to change it to talk about. That's it. I have no idea how this is going to work, Jamie, I have nothing, they haven't told us anything, they haven't told engineers anything, so I'm still waiting to hear, what that's going to entail.
When should you know that?
We should know as soon, because we have to apply for, we already did, we, we applied our NOI, which we noticed an intent that we intend to apply for that, I mean, permit to discharge our water into our, our storm water into a body of water. So, we will be doing that, but until, we're running under the old permit right now, until they, until they come out with that new spec, so I just don't know. They haven't, they haven't gave us any hints, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have questions for Bob? Thank you. Bob, you're up again. Street signs.
Yeah, the street signs, that, and we talked about that last month, I wanted to see if I could get some more quotes from you guys before we just moved on. So there's two quotes, there's a few quotes there, one of the, uh, the street signs, the street name signs. The one, the, uh, the, first quote that I got, that I threw out the last one, did in fact, wasn't in fact the lowest, was a little bit, I think there were two other quotes, but they were significantly higher, so TCP is, was the best price for the street signs, uh, to, to grant some of the compliance. So that's replacing every sign in the township. That was forty-nine sixty-one. And then the other one was the regulatory signs that we need to replace. TCP gave some quote, but actually, uh, we got a, we did a lot of signs, some are like a first thing from Hyvis, actually were a decent amount lower than that, and we worked with Mark, that Hyvis on a pretty regular basis, so I don't know that, that sign quality, but so. So I'd like to enjoy, uh, Hyvis for the regulatory signs, and then TCP for the street name signs. What you'll see on there, I, as you'll be looking at it right now, is I just got some examples, I highlighted some examples for you of, sign versus sign, and with these other, uh, with the street name signs, to see the difference in price. Uh, I think that did like, uh, like the prismatic reflective, you know, they're ninety dollars for one, and then, I feel like the CCP's, the prices were significantly lower.
Do we have a date, like when all signs have to be?
I, you know, I, that's, I think we're already kind of long in it, yeah. I was waiting for the new questions, to, uh, have a money for that, so. I mean, not everybody, there's, there's actually not too many that are in compliance, this part of the street name signs, but, we're always in compliance with regulatory signs, always. That's not an issue, you just have, as a model, there's those, those regulatory signs that I got, the fourth from Hyvis, are just signs that we can do repair, that are replaced, and then, if they need enough that we can't repair them anymore, or, you know, we, the reflectivity has gone away, so it's just, that's something that happens periodically. But the street name signs are just, they're too small, they're not, you know, they're not.
So why are you asking for us to approve?
To approve the, the regulatory signs that I want to apply from Hyvis, great, and then the, uh, street name signs, a lot of pieces.
Are you ready on that? Some.
Hyvis' total is eight fifty-eight million, uh, twenty-fourty-nine thousand.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustees Dobrath?
Yep.
LaFrida?
Yeah.
Kirby?
Yeah.
Rappa?
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number six, township property zero Haynesville Road, discussion and possible action for using the property for a community environmental program. Um, so this is mine, really brief story behind that, I was at a TOI event, and someone was talking about their food pantry, then started talking about their cemetery, and how they're doing a community garden outside of their cemetery, and then it clicked to me that we have almost four acres of land on Haynesville Road that's not being used. And if there's a way for us to use it for community good, uh, right now, we can't, we're not going to build up on it, I was going to say a building, but can we use it for community garden, can we use it for bees, can we use it for, um, a group garden, I mean, the possibilities are limited, you know, unlimited. Um, I talked to Bob about it, and I talked to the mayor of Round Lake Park, one of the big questions was water, and so there's a way that we're working, um, with another organ of business to see if we could possibly get water through them, where it would be a different, um, meter, so there are different, you know, ways for us to use the land, because I hate for that land to be sitting there, and there's a way for us to make it something that our community can use. Uh, and so what I'm asking for right now, we're still in the early stages, but asking for, um, the property for community environmental programs, and as I get more, I will bring it to you. It's just that I want to make sure that it's something that, you know, and you have your ideas too, you know, you have the, um, bicycle path eventually will be coming on Haynesville Road, there's a lot of goods we could, we could do, um, working with ameasements we have to do, working with the business, and possibly, if we built some extra parking spaces, whether or not we could use their parking, um, the driveway, get to our parking lot, there's a lot of unknowns. But for us, just to sit that property since 2007, and not do anything with it, to me, is, you know, it's just there. Let's be a board and find ways to use open land that we own for the good of the community.
So I would like to actually be involved more in this project, because as a village planner, land uses my specialty, economic development.
Go for it.
And I think, I, I, so, so including more of these conversations in terms of what programs that need to get done in order to get this, uh, property sold off, what needs to be done and made it pad ready, and then one thing is, if we decide to make this apart, that's one direction, or we can decide to sell it off for economic developments, which is also could be good for the community. The thing is, we should be careful, we can't go in both directions at once, because if you spend money to build a parking lot, you're spending money which maybe a year or two down the line.
It was more like rap, yeah, or just grass, yeah, so right now, we're, we have no money for, we have no money for it, and I understand that, so it would be something that we could work towards, moving towards, but I know, even just having bees, or having something like that, if we're able to put that on our property to start off with, to find ways to build, to build up our community and help the environment, you know, this is not going to be a quick plan, obviously, we're not going to be doing the community garden this year. But what we can do is, we, we could start making a plan with you, you know, with you, whoever else wants to be a part of it, and let's figure out how we can use the land, because the land right now, um. Michelle, what is it, zone?
That's, that's in our.
Yeah, so it's, it's commercial, so there's, there's things that we have to work out. Yeah, you can't, make sure you're coordinating. Yes, so I, I said, things we have to work out, I said, I've, I've been talking to the mayor of Round Lake Park, because it's, you know, that's where it is. So I'm more coming to the board, saying, hey, can I move forward on this, and the goal would be for a community environmental programs, nothing to build on, even like our garden out there, it's just people, you know, if we get somebody who wants to build a community garden, it's not going to cost us any money, and we're able to do that, great.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we do need to do a little bit more research, and, and for some things, maybe like the bees, or, you know, for something else, which the, uh, Highway Department can easily establish, that's one thing, but, uh, in terms of more public intensive use, like a park, or.
I never mentioned a park, there was never, yeah, there was, yeah.
Community garden, anything like that, that needs to be more of a, I think we need to take some time to think about our options in regards to that, and also, um, you know, this is something that probably I should have been involved with more earlier, so that's my bad, but, um, pushing for maybe more, if we do want to redevelop this, what are we doing in terms of economic outreach, uh, what are we doing to set up on, you know, LoopNet or CoStar, or any of those commercial real estate websites, uh, and it's good that we're working with Round Lake Park in order to, you know, obviously know what the zone is.
Right.
Help, get them to help us market the site.
And also the property has depreciated quite a bit, since, if you saw my numbers, and actually, and they came from the Sessors' office, um, they depreciated quite a bit, so the challenge is, do we sit, do we sit on the property, do we sell the property for a huge loss? Where right now, that's something that, you know, for a future conversation, it's just that, now that, you know, we have this land, let's try to, as a board, to figure out how we could do it, and, and I love that you wanted to be a part, because it's not my thing, it's just that it was a great idea that another township was using, and I figured, let's make it something that when people pass by there, if there's something, if we have the bike tech, if we have all that, it's going to be good. So if we're proactive, thinking about it now, next year, we will have a stronger plan in place.
Yeah, well, you know, the next time you're going to talk to, uh, Round Lake, because, uh, you know, I'd love to sit down with them, you, the zoning department they have there, their economic director, and you see what programs are available to potentially make that land work.
Right, I mean, that's where we're at now, and, and talking to women and gentlemen, it's like, oh, you have to have a port of body, I'm like, we're not even there yet.
Yeah.
We're not even there. There's some historical references to this, I mean, we've heard about this property, um, for many years, and how much we paid for it, and how, well, it never was valued at that, and the lack of, of, um, you know, the, um, access to the property that is now developed for any building, and so it has been something that we have discussed for years and years, about what to do with that property. In fact, when I talked to Michelle about it, I told her there used to be, um, playground equipment here, not swings, and, but they were wooden structures that one day showed up, and.
It was a cool park.
It was a cool park, yeah, well, I took my kids there, but it never had a parking lot, it never, we just used the parking lot that was there from the, you, there used to be a.
Roller, right.
And that collapsed, and then the business bought it, and, so, it, there's a lot of history, but I think your involvement would be, would be key, and, um, to do something for the property, I don't think you're going to be able to sell it, but that's just me, just because I know we'll never get the money out of it, at least under the current frame, but to use it helping the, for the public is, I mean, not mine.
There's no road, that's it. I would like to, if I can comment on that?
Yeah.
In anticipation of something, remember, though, last year, when we started talking to the county about.
The curb.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about asking them to put access in, add access for that property, well, not, because there's going to be, um, a, there's going to be a walk path on that side, we had the multi-use path on the, on the, on the east side, so on the west side, it's just going to be a, uh, a walk path, but, but we, we talked to Michelle and I, we talked with the county about incorporating a, uh, you know, an easement there, or, excuse me, a egress or something, so, you know, so we were just in the planning stage of that, so they're trying to work that into the, uh, into the plans, and we have, at least had that, so we're not spending all that money in, uh, plumbing and curb cutting and all those other stuff. So while it's all being demoed and being done, now's the time.
Now's the time, that, that was the thing, is because, you know, Bob and I have been meeting together, and it's just, I, I, it's just, I think this is the right time for us, especially with Rudy, with your experience.
Yeah, because I remember trying to get the access to that, the curb cut, so, once that's now kind of more in the works, um, that's when we should start thinking about what's in the. So once that's now kind of more in the works, that's when we should start thinking about what's next step. So.
We, I just got a little bit more forward and had, instead of the next step, have ideas of what we want to do with someone that curb is ready to be cut. Do we have any idea?
Well, they might actually cut it because they're just going to, they're just going to put it in that area. They're just going to put an entrance in. So I guess that's something you guys probably should talk about a little bit. Because you have a lot of front there and I think it's three hundred feet?
Probably.
Something like that. So you have, you know, not only does it's going to be, you know, we just talked, so what, thirty feet, forty, I don't know. You know, that's, that's up in the air, where you want to put it or where it's allowed to be put. That's, that's a double discussion with the guy. So he really has to think about how are you going to use it properly to kind of dictate maybe where you want that egress to be made. If it's just going to be open, environment, open space for a community garden and things like that, which I personally would like to see. Because it's a beautiful piece of property and I hate to have all those trees being mowed down, you know, for something commercial. So I, I would, it would make me happy to see that being open, you know, and be used in a more environmentally friendly way. But again, that's up to the board. But that will, like I said, that, that could have some impact on where you put that entrance.
So can we make a motion to move forward on?
I don't think we need.
No motion? Just, just, just keep going?
I think, I mean, this is just.
Just an investigation, okay.
Yeah, this is.
We're not approving anything.
Make it to, to our attention, to the forefront again. But yeah, there's no action that is.
Now you have another person to volunteer to go.
That's awesome.
That's, that's something where I would actually take a day off work to.
Wow.
You sacrificed this trip, you know.
Wow.
You got that on the record, right?
Or we could try to make it.
We're recording.
Yeah. Or later in the, later in the day.
Sure.
Later in the day.
That works.
Okay, wonderful. So I'll.
Don't park it up in the business next door.
Who's the business? Serena.
Serena.
The installation company.
But our goal, but our goal is to make friends with our neighbors. Our goal is to work with our neighbors and, and see where they could see the good in having the land used what we want it to be used. So that is.
Are those current plots, have they been claimed or who's taking care of those current plots in our community?
Oh, they're all, they're all claimed.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, well, actually, except for the first two, the University of Illinois Extension had changed their plans a little bit with the children that were going to be doing it. So they will be used. We actually have two more that are coming next week with the Girl Scouts. And they are going to be growing the vegetables and then donating them back to the township part of their Brown, Brown Award. And we have a few others that we, giving the food back to us. And some people who don't have the opportunity to have a backyard or are able to have grass or grow, they use our garden for their own personal use. And, and they love it. So, yes, they are being used. But Bob, again, just put fresh dirt as his people on, on the plot. So thank you again. Bob does a lot. Thank you.
Okay, next. Avon, number seven, Avon Accountability Committee, Luigi.
If anybody would like a copy, there's copies of this. What this week has discussion, it's kind of an offshoot. Though we had a finance committee and we've had some mandates with the, the Decennial Committee Act fifty I S C seventy dash one. I did send this to Megan and she looked over to make sure that was submitted and what, what we talked about. And is forming a committee that would have the knowledge of the township to be able to know what the township does. And that accountability is huge. If we ever need to raise the levy or, you know, have some kind of changes or have to make some drastic decisions, it's good to have people that are in the know. School districts raise and fall on referendums by how much involvement they have with the community and an ongoing basis with what the school districts are doing. And I see this as that same accountability. So as we look at our programs, we look at our, how we pay for those programs, how much money we spend on those programs and what aid we give to the community, this committee would be able to look at all that and see the value of what we do. And then meld that with the mandated committee, which is supposed to decide whether the township is a legitimate government entity or not. And I would be fearful personally of putting that in the hands of any Joe Schmo or Jane Schmo that walked off the street and says, I think we need to get rid of townships without knowing what we do and what we care for and what we're about. So we made some decisions. There's one thing that I think we need to talk about. I did send this to you and there's a couple of toil changes, so I gave you a new copy. Whether we have three members of board on the committee, which was the makeup of the finance committee, or we have two. If we have three, we have to follow on and again, we have to make sure that we, you know, have a forum and that they're published out. Quite frankly, I would do that even if we had two, just because I think it's good community practice and it's good citizenship for our constituents that they know what we're doing. But if we don't have a forum, we're not held to the same standards. There's a little bit more flexibility. And so what I'm suggesting is that we maybe move it to two members of, two trustees on board instead of three. So there's that forum, but to change, all the little changes truly an advisory function. And the goal is to make some decisions, which is a reflection of some work we did with advising the finance committee and for us to do that and all of them, so we change.
Well, you need to add to that too. If you, if you have three members, you have to make sure your agenda is proposed in advance, one minute of everything.
Yeah.
So you are, you're open up to more OMA requirements in this forum, so.
Are we in violation of OMA if two trustees are a part of it, but then another trustee happens to walk in and the public comment on stuff?
Then you, you're under OMA if another, if there are three of you present, it doesn't matter. It's two are the committee and one is in the public here. That's OMA, but.
That's why I say policy.
I, that's why I say I think we still need to follow those practices. I'm not saying if we do two, public flies out the window. We still need to adhere to it. But if emergency comes up and we need to have a meeting and, or something changes within the agenda, we have a little bit more flexibility.
Would two, would the number of trustees, whether it's two or three, would all of them have to be at the committee meetings? So in other words, if we select two trustees, is the meeting condition on the two trustees attendance? Or could, as long as there's a quorum of non-elected and elected, does it matter?
I don't think you even have to have a forum if you, you know, not subject to Robert's rule of order or anything like that. It's just.
And, and I think that the question lies as well, their decision making, they're only an advisory committee.
No, I, I understand. This says Robert's rules of order. So does the physical forum have to include two trustees or can it be one trustee and however many citizens at large? So we're, if we're going to form a committee.
You're saying about how, how many flights should show up for the meeting?
Correct. Does, does the ratio of trustees in the room affect? Okay. So if it's two trustees and five citizens at large, if one trustee's up.
No, a quorum, it doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you.
What about me?
What about, yeah, what about our supervisor?
You would, you would make the note, open meeting and violations of OMA.
I'm kidding. Unless you're.
But then there's also language in here about supervisor discretion and stuff like that. So I just want to make sure we go with this, that we're completely cohesive and unclear without potentially leaving ourselves at risk to OMA.
No, and, and you should be following the rest of those practices anyway. And just because it's, it's good, it's a best practice in good government, running community to it, have your agendas published for, 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 for reasons for accountability. But it's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would have it.
If it's difficult to get three people to also commit to another committee, then that's something you want to collect.
Is there any enforcement if we fail to form this state mandating committee?
Dicentennial?
Yeah, I kind of get the word.
Well, it's, I don't think you should look at it from what's going to happen if we don't. I think you should look at it as we've been asked to do this and let's, let's comply.
No, I understand.
Have I seen anything that says what the fine is or violation of OMA? No, when I could, it might be what I have.
There's a high probability we're going to do all this order and it's going to be given to somebody who may not agree with that. As that is what the reception is.
If we need to do it, we can do it and still create an environment.
But, but what it's, but what it's going to do, it's going to open us up to understand the needs of the township, our strengths and what we want to do better and, and things like that. So it's really more like an evaluation for us. Because eventually, this is a little off topic, that someone suggested that I, I form a township coalition. And it was through another organization that I work with. Because the goal is to make us more successful, we need to have people in place. And so just like Rudy, this is his expertise, is, is with, you know, what's your job?
Village planner.
Village planner. Okay, so for that makes really sense. So we're going to put a coalition together. We're going to put something together.
I understand. I'm just trying to understand the mechanics a little more. So.
Well, part of it is you're required to.
Right. They prepare a law, and then, but when they prepare the report, if I read parts of the law correctly, does it not dissolve? So it's okay to combine a finance committee and what you're proposing? Because under the, the law, the disaccountability group is to prepare a report and then once the report's submitted, it's dissolved.
Well, this is not a finance.
No, I understand, but this is merging the two functions of finance.
But I don't think the intent is to dissolve the sum.
No, she's saying that the people who are on the finance committee in the past or who wanted me, they have a stake in what happens in the township. So they're more likely to want to do.
You might be looking at an earlier draft before I cut all of her finance committee references out.
So I guess back to my initial question, when is it due by? Because I'd love to read this again, the, I'm ensuring.
You have eighteen months. You have to have two meetings in eighteen months, so.
So first thing is after like next month?
June something. You could pass it.
Eighteen months after you have your first meeting.
Wow.
I want to make sure that I'm reading the right stuff, because there's been drafts.
So one thing I wanted to make sure on right now is that the dicentennial required meeting and then the accountability part of it. But one, obviously, when the dicentennial portion is done, that, that doesn't just completely close the entire committee and move you on. And then the other thing is, do the committees need to be separate? Because one is stated and the other is just something that we think is good for the township.
I don't think so.
No.
You don't think so?
Yeah, I got that totally by subject book because I didn't think so either, but I'm not a lawyer. So that it is something we could do co-happenally because we're not, we're not setting up a finance. What we're doing is we're setting up a committee to review the practices that we have with regards to service to our community.
And be assigned or required work to that thing.
And, and, and then that is also a piece of our job.
And I'm still a big.
Because, because involvement is the key here. Involvement is the key. And also future trustees. How do you get people to just say, oh, I'm going to be a trustee unless they're politically involved and some politician says, oh, you know what? You should try to be the, the AYW township person. But we want community members that are invested in the community to also say, hey, township is a service. This is a service we want to be involved with and therefore I could be a part of the, of, of public life and be an elected official and also.
I just want to make sure that when we set up this committee and let's say there, you know, if there's these people on it, that the state doesn't say, well, for the dicentennial committee, you need this group and this group and this group also on it.
No.
Okay.
That's not happening.
No, we just want, they don't care. They don't care who's on it.
Okay, that's.
They don't care.
So they don't care when we just give to the finance that our cash trustees are.
Well, quite frankly, because we don't have a finance committee.
And, and that was one of my goals is to keep, is keep that finance committee.
And that was part of the discussion we had and.
I think most of all the members kind of.
Grab a seat down in his chair.
But the thing is, well, we offered, I offered somebody to come back. I did offer somebody to come back.
So we're trying to do community engagement, which is to have this accountability. But yeah, we can't get anybody to be in the community engaged on the finance committee.
Again, that's not true.
That's not really true.
So we just need a handful of people.
Yeah, we need a handful of people. We have two trustees, you know, and we have, I forget how many, maybe like four public, five public, whatever, six. But it, you know, that, those are the people that we get to see that are interested in something different than money. A lot of people won't go to the finance committee because they don't want to deal with money.
Isn't this just to check and make sure that we're spending our money right and we're doing a good job in providing a service via money?
Yeah, with, there's a key, we're providing, we're providing the services that the community needs and a piece of it is that all costs money. So there has to be, they have to have some understanding of what money we have and how we get our money in order to be able to say, oh, yeah, we should do a community garden because this is, we have this money channel. You can't take money out of our services, but it's not the only thing that drives our service.
It's a valuation of the township, basically, how we, how we're spending our money. And with our finance committees, we had before, we didn't need as much this year, but in the past, it was, it was, they were just an oversight. They didn't have the ability to make a final decision on a vote. But having community members, and I've said this continuously.
You do.
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I do is because.
So I'm trying, my job is to see if I can compromise, establish what I think are the importance for this. But also, knowledge of what we do is critically important. And you're right, it is very hard to get people involved. Look at library boards, school boards. People aren't going, they don't want to be involved in the politics. They don't want, you know, there's a huge, I don't want to say disdain, but.
Disgust?
I.
Maybe.
Just kidding, whatever. And so this is a way to really focus on the needs of the community and get people to know about services and understand the services. And hopefully this will lead the visuals to become more relevant within the community and be more involved in potentially.
And also understand what the.
That's a sign.
No, but also understanding what the township does. These people who are on the committee, they're going to go back to their people. They're going to go back and say, this is what's going on in Avon Township.
So that I got is elected officials, just reportedly.
Of course it is.
The only thing that causes me pause is, can we change some of this to say, elected officials shall be determined with the supervisor move on board? If I'm reading this correctly, we're basically seceding the makeup of the committee to the supervisor. And doing so, if the point of this is also to be like a finance committee checking balance, should it also have more board buy-in with who's a part of it and who makes it up?
I, I don't, I, well, my intention wasn't to disengage the board. My intention was to, for the supervisor to use that as part of the communication. Hey, you know, these are people that said they wanted to do it. I don't see it as he gave it. I see, I see it as she's in charge of board and that she should bring this back.
Do we have trustees that want to be on, on this committee?
I do need to bring someone to your attention that I just looked up. You have to have your first meeting by June ten.
Yeah.
So you do need to consider this tonight. Unless you want to have a special meeting just for this.
Do we have commit, we have trustees?
I, I just.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I don't mind in terms of moving this forward. I do think though that Michael burns up a good point with, there should. I, I, again, I'm fine with recommendations for a board by the supervisor. You're on this all the time. Like, I want that. That's great. Let's bring it by the board just before we get anybody onto this committee. So just finding some language that, you know, is not just sole discretion of the supervisor, but.
So, so just about now we'd be between, if it's January or June ten, we don't, we don't have time to do that. I mean, right now I'm asking like on this board right now, who wants to be a part of the committee? Let's start there.
Gotcha.
Can I make some ad hoc suggestions for changes to the procedural rules, which might resolve some of this very quickly?
Sure.
First one, committee members shall be comprised of two township elected officials. Can be changed, I have to say comprised of the Avon Township Supervisor and four to six at-large members of the public. That allows for elected officials, but doesn't require them. We don't have to settle on that today. That also solves a problem with elected official members shall be determined at the sole discretion of the supervisor, which I think is a violation because the supervisor is then in charge of the placement of elected officials and there's no ability for the officials to actually legislate. So I'd be concerned about that.
It's not a legislative body, that's definitely.
I still grant you the power.
You can strike that language.
I, I'd rather go with just having a board appoint, not just a supervisor.
Just remember, it's just an approving, a recommend, a recommending body.
Right, but I think numbers is a problem.
They don't have any, any.
Sure, but we should have.
Okay, or for example, by decisions.
We should, we should just have, you know, made sure that they come before, we've approved them before they're allowed on the board. There should be some town board approval to that.
You need to figure that out.
So we would have to, right now, we would have to ask our publicists here right now.
So I would agree with Chris's language.
I mean, I, I would agree with Chris's language. But, okay, so, I mean, there's no reason that supervisors shouldn't have the discretion to appoint numbers of the public.
Okay.
Frankly, the only concern is the, having the sole discretion of the elected officials. I think the elected body, if they choose to have a trustee on board or an assessor, clerk, whatever, that the board should be able to at least consider that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But not a requirement for having those elected officials on the board, so.
I think there should be.
There's, nothing says. There's, nothing says, nothing says that the supervisor appoints, it says the committee member shall be comprised of two township elected officials and four at-large members. And that at-large members shall be recommended by the, by the committee, but that's it.
But the one above it, that's what's confusing me.
Yeah, the one that.
That's all I'm just seeking.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, I see.
And just take it out.
Yeah, I'm okay with taking that, because that's not.
Back to your question, who's interested in serving on this?
And if you're not, then I'll make you price.
Do we know what time it's supposed to meet? Because if it's one of those six o'clock before every board meeting, then as much as I'd like to serve on it, I don't think I can make it, because I'm usually downtown.
If you need someone, I can be on it.
So do you need, do you have some dates that you?
Or times in mind?
We have to make you get my phone.
And then, is this subject, can this be done virtually too? Because it's not a governing body.
Oh.
Because if it can be done virtually, I'm sure, provided it's not.
As long as you're not getting into an open meeting act violation, then you can't, because yes, may all the rules change.
I believe we're gonna try to have all the meetings.
No, I mean, I just, if you get yourself into an open meeting act situation, where you have more than two people from the board, as soon as you have three members of the town board that are present, then it doesn't matter if it's just a committee, it's, you have to follow open meeting act. I don't think you can meet virtually under open meeting act without disaster declaration, or unless you're gone because of a list or a planned work event. That should be on your policy brief.
Right, that's true.
So then the answer is no. You can't meet on Zoom if you end up with more than three members of the board, does that make sense?
Three or more members.
Correct.
So then.
So I would say that, for the first meeting, that we should try to meet in person, because I think there's a lot to be said about in person, and just transmitting that information, and being able to develop a relationship with that person, and as far, and I think that Zoom does address all the tricky situations with regards to who's there and who's not there. But if we go with the two mem, two trustees, I don't have any problem with a supervisor and a trustee, or however you guys want to make it out, obviously, it doesn't matter to me, it's just elected officials, there should only be two elected officials on it. And we could meet as soon as the 24th, if you think you have the community members, I mean, you deal a lot with a community that has a real passion for the services our township offers, so do you think you could get a couple of people?
I think we need three, though, not many.
Three more, three more.
But I.
I have too many committees I'm developing.
What?
I know, on the board.
I mean, I think I should be on it, on it, only because I understand that, you know, ins and outs, for the most part, what's going on.
The dicentennial committee requires it, that the supervisor be the chair of the dicentennial committee.
Well, the finance committee.
The dicentennial portion, the supervisor must be the chair, and does the rest of that.
So then that takes away one person.
So then there has to be at least one more trustee.
One more trustee.
So it sounds like our supervisor and Rudy?
Sure.
So Rudy, what is your schedule like?
I'm fine, anytime after 5:30, because that's when I get back up here. So I guess, 6:30, 6 on Tuesdays, if you want to make it easy, just before the board meetings, but otherwise.
So, so we could meet then?
So technically, they just have to meet once before the June deadline, but they don't have to take action, correct? So the purpose of your first meeting, you literally just to check a box.
Your first meeting is before, so, the first meeting, and then June.
I think the first meeting would be to explain this one, that should say, that one of the functions of this committee will be this, because that's the pressure that we're getting, is to meet.
So is the second Tuesday?
No, it's not, the second Tuesday is the 13th, unfortunately, so.
Okay, so we have to go before that.
So it has to happen before the next regular board meeting.
But this meeting, the first meeting is more just to check a box, to say we did it, and then future meetings could be the real meat and potatoes of the war.
Yes.
So I guess my point is, you and Rudy and one other person basically have to find a date that works before June 10, right? To say, hey, this is our committee, cool, cool, and then.
Yeah, I agree with you, and so, I mean, how about the 31st, I mean.
Michelle, choose a date, well, you know, yeah.
Well, I want to take it, you made 31st, what day do we have to say?
That's a Wednesday, and then you, because there's no meetings, and you can meet here, and you can.
Well, even if there's a meeting.
See if you can get somebody to explain what exactly is the role of the dicentennial.
And when does the report have to be submitted?
18 months, 11 months.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, so.
And I seem to just.
But that's it.
The same ones.
Right, I understand, I'm just saying, like, we're basically moving the goalposts a little bit, just to build a community impact.
At 6 o'clock.
So are we, what's the, uh, priorities of this?
We're just gonna, we're gonna take out the app, we're gonna change it to, and shake out the elected officials, the sole discretion of the supervisor. I must have been tired during that.
That's where you're going?
Because I didn't want, I didn't want anybody to tell me to do it.
Motion and nominee's meeting?
Yeah.
It's in writing, she cannot be involved.
Yeah, why aren't you on the committee?
Because you can have a committee.
You've got a right, willing and excited person, couldn't it?
And if I found, then I would, I would have thought, well, maybe anyways, I never.
Yeah, I mean, I still, I still encourage our trustees, or clerk, or anybody else to be a part of the committee, and just listen, it doesn't hurt us to have additional people, it really doesn't. So you guys could think about that, not doing anything, May 31st at 6 o'clock, be a part of our meeting.
Think of this as a feeder program for potential, for potential trustees in the future.
Well, now we just made it political.
No.
This is a farm system for people thinking around for office?
No, it's not.
All right, let's move it on.
Why don't you, what, do you guys need to vote on that?
Yeah, there's, is there voting time?
Is there?
Do we need to vote on hours?
I knew that, with the editorial changes that were approved, the Avon Council, community procedures, and.
Can you just repeat the editorial changes again?
The editorial change would be two, two elected officials, instead of trustee, we'll put two elected officials, which is what it says in here, and eliminate the elected official member shall be determined by the sole discretion of the supervisor.
Okay.
Oh, so we just.
See?
Nice.
It is cool, it's definitely cool.
So is motion?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Go call.
I'm not quite sure I foul, so.
So we remove the sole discretion supervisor, change it to, what was the other editorial rule? Sure, yes.
I don't want to get any objection.
Yes?
Yes.
Lefreda?
Aye.
Rapa?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Bowman, sorry, Supervisor Bowman.
Hi.
Having a good night?
That's okay.
Good stuff.
Good night.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next is number eight, Pride Week Lawn Display, that will be.
So in prior years, we raised the flag on the flag pole, and I know there have been some questions about First Amendment rights, and public versus protected versus government speech, and all types of things like that. We received this memorandum from Megan Mack, I think you all have a copy of that, regarding the legality and some of that stuff. Thank you, Megan, for preparing this, and thank you, Michelle and Siva, for talking with our council on this and being very clear. I really want to thank Michelle for her leadership on this, because when she did the child abuse awareness display, it kind of inspired me to go, you know, it doesn't have to be a flag on a pole, it just has to say that, you know, we're a supportive body of a particular thing. And in this particular case, Avon is going to be fortunate enough to support two major Pride events this year on the same weekend. The Grayslake Pride parade will be going on, but the day before that, the Lake County Pride Fest is moved around Lake Beach at the Civic Center. So to have two of these outstanding events in our community, I feel that it would be very important for us to acknowledge that and support that community in their celebration that weekend. So my request is to do a law display, not with pinwheels, but with some, nothing larger than like a three by five size, either flags in the ground, or yard signs, but things that are relatively small, tasteful at the streetside, just representing the appropriate pride colors and support for that community.
I love it.
Sounds good. I'll make a motion to do it. I'll second that.
So I do have some discussion about it. So, I'm the one that's, I had this great idea, that's a great idea, for the pinwheels, and I understand what's your idea to do it. My only concern is, we also have Juneteenth going on at the same time, and we're acknowledging in the past, two flags, one for Juneteenth, and one for Pride, and now we are having one stand out more than the other. And so my concern is, and it is, how do we decide that one gets a display, one gets a flag, and then when we have other events, or, you know, other situations going on, is priority? Hindsight, I love that I did the pinwheels, but I know I did open up discussion a little bit about, you know, for our government to use it, is that how do we say, Juneteenth, you get a flag, but Pride gets a law? Or how do we decide which one is next? And again, this is something that I never thought of when I was doing the pinwheels, I'm thinking, hey, pinwheels! But if there would have been another event filling on, or another flag, or something like that, it's sending mixed messages, and that's what my concern was, when I talked to Megan, was that the message that we're doing is one more than the other, how is that perceived in the community? Do, you know, is, I'm like, gay child abuse prevention, you know what I mean? But how is it going to be perceived? Not, not, not the Pride necessarily, the flags, it's just the overall, how do we decide when people are driving down the street? Because, you know, people commented about the pinwheels, some people said they were fine it, about the pinwheels. So, so I'm saying is, I did get a lot of feedback, a lot of it was good, and some of it was, it was, you know, it was on my property, it went dry, whatever, but those are my concerns, and those are things that is going to come to the supervisor more than is going to come to the trustees. Why we pick one over the other, or they won't, I don't know, but it's a legitimate concern of mine, representing, and we're all representing the township. That's what I, I just, I just really have to make that clear, that things that I thought was a great idea, I step back now saying, did I open up the door? Not, again, not just for this, but for how do, how do we decide as a group, what the town, what the township thinks, thinks is in force.
Yeah, keep us informed.
But the thing is the board, the thing is the public, if the public comes to us and says, I want this on the law now, what are we gonna do?
We should bring it, so you're still technically following under government speech?
No, 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 but I just want to run up that question.
So you would say that you would be happy to take it to the board, and as long as the board votes to allow it there, it's still government speech? If it just goes up, and no one says anything about it, now you've allowed for private speech, and now you've opened the door to everybody.
That's exactly what it is. Well, it's because, I've dealt with this all my entire professional career, school districts are very sensitive to these types of things, because we've had issues where we allow something that we thought was innocent, and there's nothing, well, it was child asked. For one of my districts, it was, they wanted to, at the start of the school year, they wanted to say a prayer, applaud the flag before the school started, and then we had an atheist group that was for God in the community, that wanted to have an atheist celebration at the flag. So it is, it is something that I think, I, no, I don't have any problems with this, I think, you know, what saves you are the rules and the standards that you set. Do you have a policy that says exactly what the procedure should be? And we need to probably look at those and see.
My, I mean, my question is, what happens if somebody comes to us and says, we want this, and the board, we say no, and then, for what reason?
Well, right now.
Well, you have the right to do that.
No, no, I can, I can, I can, I can say no. No, no, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, because I think when people are driving on the street, stand up with the pinwheels, the perception I got was.
I would propose that we take things on a case-by-case basis, do what our attorney suggested, in the interest of the time, there is a motion and a second.
Michael, not always about time, please, Michael, it's not about time.
The easy answer I would say, right now, is short of the child abuse laws, everything else is a standard state or federal day, or the week, or month, definitely have done everything for it. Short of that, that's what we have as a standard.
So I, so I, I just said, I'm just making my.
Because we had this conversation last year, pretty much the same thing, and we said, look, it's, it's here, it's in 16 days, weeks, that will do, and so.
So I think, well, we need to use, I don't have any problems approving this at this juncture, but I think that we need to, again, take a very close look, have our policies and procedures, and make sure that we have the necessary guidelines, so that we can't just have somebody that comes in here and says, oh, look, there's pinwheels, I'm gonna put this, and you're saying a flag, and you're saying it's signed now, it's two by five, and somebody says, well, we want to put one that's 10 by 10. You know, there's, those are all the pushing of that policy.
So, yeah, I mean, definitely for next month, we'll have to do that. It's just that, you know, if I, if I remain quiet, then all I'm doing is, is saying yes to be a part of the board, and that's not my thing, my thing is just to make sure, again, I'm gonna keep saying this, we're representing the community the best we can, and child abuse prevention, I, you know, at the time, I was thinking it was a good idea, but there were, I said, the what's crazy fallback, and that was just because of the pinwheels, that people came to me and said, take down the pinwheels, they called the, they called the Ronald Park Police.
Seriously?
Yeah, they called the Ronald Park Police on the pinwheels.
All right. Well, I, if you don't want to, or pinwheels or plaques, that's fine, you don't have to. I think we should move on to the vote, though.
Okay, a few people, motion, good motion.
Motion by Dobrah, second by Rapa.
I got it. Hey, Dylan.
Hi. Did I hear second, or?
Yeah, there's a motion by trustee Dobrah, and second by trustee Rapa.
And the only thing that I'm asking is that we put on the record that we do, that we die into policy.
I have that note here.
And again, okay.
Go call?
Go call.
Trustee Lefreda?
Aye.
Trustee Kirby?
Aye.
Trustee Rapa?
Aye.
Trustee Dobrah?
Yes.
Supervisor Bowman?
I'm gonna abstain.
Motion carries. I will prepare what the ballot policies for the next meeting.
Thank you. And then I think we watch, watch.
Also, if you're just signing to our training, sure.
Okay, now, executive session. I love you guys, but I'm gonna have you guys leave for 30 minutes.
You need a motion.
Can I have a motion to go with the executive session?
I'll second. For the purposes of, by LCS 122C1, in compliance, compensation, performance of a specific